I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol Pearson, Richard Trager, Brian Garrison, Dale Stewart, Mike Shonk.
President.
I didn't know.
Yeah, me and Ted, now I'm not here.
Where?
My brother.
Are you? Okay.
Move next to the reading of minutes from October 7, 2019. Any additions to the recent minutes or minutes of seven minutes?
I don't remember the minutes of the last one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Pose. Motion carries. Move next to Department of Health and Sports Chief Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. My men, my hosts for fun, the court just reporting again that the fifth grade elementary care program is in session. And we're at graduation on December 10th, A3M. The owners of the gymnasium are all welcome to attend this ceremony. And the Delphi first front to this present, the Strunkery event at Brookston of this year. My statistics there are 284,403 miles driven. We had five last year. There were 274 halls for service, 239 reports, 79 vehicles stopped, 18 vehicles, 7 good morning. Other rush reports, support, and tickets to the hangar license issue. And that's, yes, probably good to release this on the last part of the day.
Any questions for the chief?
This is the miles driven, about 1,000 miles less than usual.
That's about right. If you can get the figures from our, the mileage and the, yeah.
And what's the chief? Thanks, sir. Two pin marks.
We had three water leaks last month. Living waters that are angry and were going there, they do it every year. Asphalt and dilly cuts, milestone, they asphalt the alleys in South Wilson or in South Indian Street. Waterline replaced earlier. Bone contractors are seeding around bulk course and dirt work. They're pressure checking and vacuuming the new watering from wall seven to the river station above five. DMN tanks has poured all the walls of the tank on the ground. Segments, they have cranes scheduled Wednesday. Being balanced by the red room tanks, it's in all three ways, but it's all set up. The trusses did arrive and they are installed on the river station. We put a dead road on and doing that. For me, that's what I heard last week going out for the site.
Any questions for the superintendent? Alright, thanks, sir. Superintendent May, sir.
Good evening. Disinfection season has ended, so orange sulfur dioxide usage will not happen until next April 1st. Couple tests will stop the season. The phosphorus project is coming to an end. The building is complete. There will be a punch list probably within the next two, three weeks. We are presently feeding the product out of the tank and out of the building. We got our first load of sodium aluminate, which is what we'll be using for phosphorus removal. We got it on the 29th. Everything went smooth. So, like I said, we're feeding the product out of the new building. The only other thing, I didn't mention anything before the works, but we had two power outages last month. Early, late on the 24th through the 25th, we had a power outage at the state road 39 river station. Luckily, we had our home set up out there, so there were no issues. And then on the 26th, the disconnect on the pole blew up entire street. So, we had Houston electric came in and did the repairs. Questions? Alright, thanks, sir. Superintendent Line is on vacation this week, to summarize this report. Contractor came in for ride of the car, put asphalt over top of the walking path. They still have to come back in and do some dirt work and some salt cutting. Slusters came in and replaced some trees that were under warranty that had died. And then some other trees around the downtown that weren't under warranty that died. Did some alley work, cleaned up some debris, did some grading. And then leak pickup has started, started a couple of weeks ago. Our scheduled normal Tuesday yard waste pickup has come to an end for the year. They still will try to get around one more time after leak block and pick up all the brush. And as they can, if it's too late to pick up, please, if you go out and pick up yard waste. Any questions regarding superintendent line, this report? And I've just got a couple of things. Recycling tomorrow will start going back to Warner's where it will get sorted. NDOT announced 907,000, I think $300,000. An award for community crossings towards Sandy Middle Royal Road this last month. The Carroll County Redevelopment Commission agreed to contribute $1 million towards Phase 2. That's on top of the $1 million contribution in a forgivable bond anticipation through the Indiana Finance. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Quick, Trager, Aldridge, do you have anything?
Just the two girls went to intensive training for all day, four classes.
President Brodman, Stewart, anything from the area play commission?
Nothing, Major. We still trying to figure out the ordinance on cutting the curves for entry, front entry into homes. Still trying to figure that out, but everything else is a standard meeting.
Any questions for President Brodman, Stewart? Mr. Trager, anything for the Carroll County NBC?
I wouldn't have the last meeting, but we are continuing having regular meetings of the Land Management and other organizations.
Any questions for Councilman Trager? Councilman Shonk, anything from the Northwest Hallways District?
No, we don't have a meeting until, I believe, the 6th of December. That would be the final meeting for this year. I think that's to wrap up things for the year. Let us know more about the judiciary situation, getting rid of it. Other than that, that's about it.
Councilman, any questions for Councilman Shonk? Alright, we'll move next to unfinished business. This is the third and final reading of proposed ordinance 2019-5. An ordinance regarding breeds, weeds. Any discussion? And it could be breeds if they don't have them. Any discussion regarding proposed ordinance 2019-5? Is there a motion to approve on third and final reading?
Councilman.
Oh, alright, I'll give it to Councilman Garrison. Is there a second? Alright, any further discussion regarding proposed ordinance 2019-5? All a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. On this one. Make sure we got some stuff for you to sign in the minutes, saying this ordinance, motion passes if I can say that. Make sure to sign that before you guys leave today. The next ordinance is proposed ordinance 2019-9. This is something we tableed last meeting. This is an ordinance regarding heavy vehicle parking. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Anything that should be amended from this ordinance to move forward? It'll pass the government's review.
Is this just on the side of city street? Or does it have to do with setting up people's driveway and stuff like that?
Is any street, alley, or in the city park? Any other questions, discussion regarding this proposed ordinance?
Yes, sir. Doesn't make, doesn't make sense at all if somebody's not used for head. You're basically saying you want to know more housing in town that's got parking in the rear, right? Can't park on the end or can't park in the front. Know what you're saying from the ordinance? Or you're on a heavy vehicle, heavy vehicle.
This is just heavy vehicle.
Yeah.
So it's saying you can't park a camper in front of your house or?
Have you looked at more than, City of Lafayette's ordinance? They got camper park down there. It's been there for three years, I know, in areas.
I don't think I pulled their ordinance. Actually, I know they didn't because they're not on American Legal Publishing. I pulled, two months ago, I had examples from a lot of surrounding communities, or smaller communities in the area. I think this one follows peruse. But there's examples.
See, if I'm getting ready to go camping tomorrow and pull my camper, you tell me I can't plug it in to be able to see and put my stuff in there. Doesn't make sense. You're really creating problems for people. That's why I said if I can't plug electric in to be able to see the door inside to put my stuff in there, they will leave the next day.
I just copied what grew in. If the city council wants to amend the ordinance to go away from that portion, that discretion, the city council?
I think we need to look at this a little closer, though. Maybe you got five new council members who are command, why don't you let them decide? It's not something we have to have today.
I would think they should probably then consider whether you pile lumber in parking spots. And so, if we really look into it, maybe we need to look into all the things that go in parking.
Need to look more just per use ordinance, you need to look at the ordinance.
I'm sure, I'm sure we have, Mr. Watson, I'm sure we have.
I provided seven to nine, two months ago, examples from.
Since it can be there for no more than 24 hours, it can be, like a camper. So you could lug it, you could have it plugged in and lug it, as long as you didn't put it separate, doesn't matter.
He said.
A little later on, especially if it'll shout out that or you actually like a galley or water tower, what would be more relevant? That's, I mean, we could strike that sentence from the, the, the.
Yeah. Some truck drivers come on for the weekend, they're in, come in Friday evening and leave Sunday, so that'd be 48 hours. And it's a tractor from house or in his driveway. I know.
I know this ordinance, he would be permitted to do it in his driveway, as long as it wasn't in the right way. If it was on the street and he had his tractor, you know, on the street for more than the time allotted in this, then it would be a violation.
Plugs and semis are plugged in also because of cold weather, that's a thought.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Karen.
That's okay. It seems to me like, yes, we could strike that, such the genre of be attached to. I mean, maybe it needs to be clearer than that, I don't know, just striking it. Should there be a time limit on that they can be attached to, like they're called, called up?
More than 48 hours or something.
I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, it's, it's down here. They can only sit on the street in front of the house for 24 hours anyway, so it'd be. I mean, I think by striking it, you'd be hooked up with electric and water for the whole 24 hours that you parked on the street.
And you have trouble on a public street stretching electric cords and water, and you're on a public street. During the yard, that's something different.
Should be stretching the electric cords across the sidewalk.
You know, the thing must be, we put it in a drive, but.
Any other discussion from the council? Is there a desire to move forward with this tonight on first reading? Is there a motion for passing conference reading? And none considering the ordinance ahead, if you did. Unless, you guys want to talk about the next one?
I would say further on next time, then.
Go on the next one. Alright, move next to new business. Proposed ordinance 2019-10, ordinance approving adopting and authorizing a change in the schedule of rates and charges for the city of Delphi and the municipal water utility. Governor John Julian here in the moment, Governor Tilly. Mr. Julian, I will give you the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Be back in Delphi. The ordinance sets up for consideration this evening, like some recognition of rates and charges that are contained in this report. So if it's okay with you, I'll take a couple of minutes and walk you through it. The, the first schedule is a recap of the water project that is the primary driver for the adjustment of rates and charges. The schedule that you'll see here shows the proposed project in total. So we're talking about a $14.6 million project. As you well know, we took this first swipe of this project about a year ago. When we had the first phase of the contract negotiated and secured the financing from the SRF program. And a loan package from them that took care of about 4.2, excuse me, $7.4 million of the cost. So from there to where we are today, a number of things have happened. Most importantly, the, the next phase of the project has been negotiated. And a contract reached with Bowen to complete the next phase. In addition to locking into what the, the second phase project costs are, you were also able to secure really three pieces of financing. Two of them are basically grants made up of one piece of $1 million coming from the county RDC. The RDC Commission committing $1 million to the project. The second piece is a $1 million grant known as a forgivable ban from the SRF program. So they kind of sweeten their, their financing package to give you free money to the tune of $1 million. And the last piece of the financing package is a $5.2 million loan. At their low interest rate of 2.52 percent is the, is the final rate. So when we put all the pieces together, as I mentioned, we have about a $4.6 million project. We have our first financing of $7.4 million we secured last year. We've got the $5.2 million loan that we will close later this, or next month. And we have the, the $2 million grant, grant commitments for the financing. So when we look at the rates and charges, we do have to make sure that there is adequate dollars being coming, being generated from the rates and charges to take care of this new $5.2 million loan. So if you flip to the next page, it'll give us the different pieces and parts that lead us to what type of rate adjustments necessary to complete this, this project financing. A lot of numbers there, but the, the amount in total is shown about halfway down that we need about $2.2 million annually in revenues. And that comes in, in, or the reason we need that is we need just under $1 million a year to take care of the day-to-day operations of the water utility to keep it in good operating, good operating shape. We need about, almost a million dollars of revenues to take care of the debt that's outstanding for the water utility. And then we need about another 2.8, 2, almost 3, excuse me, 200 and, almost $300,000 in revenues to fund reserves that are held in the utility. Falls into two little pieces. One is we put aside money as a safety net that we always have enough available to make bond payments. It's good business practice to have reserves that if something were to disrupt the financial operations of the water utility, you've got money to continue to make bond payments as you work yourself through any, any disruption there. It's good business practice, but it's also a requirement of getting the, the grant and the loan from the SRF program. The second allowance for, for funding is you've got millions of dollars worth of infrastructure that's in place. That's critical for your ability to distribute and deliver water to your customers. Certain pieces of that infrastructure is going to wear out over time. Good business practices tell us that you should keep a cash reserve available, funding that so that as those projects, as those pieces of equipment wear out, you've got cash on hand to replace them as needed to continue to deliver a safe, reliable service. So when you add it all together, you, you need about $2.2 million to, to meet the financial obligations of water utility to keep things functioning in good, sound business practices. Right now, your current rates are going to generate about $1.6 million. So we have a gap of about $600,000. So the ordinance sets before this evening will eliminate that gap by adjusting your rates about 39 percent. Percentages help, but dollars and cents is what we're most used to looking at in terms of what does this mean to the average bill. So right now, your, your average residential customer is going to be paying a little over $32 a month. So it's about $32.40 a month. So when we implement the new rates that are in the ordinance, that's going to increase that about $12.60 a month. We're taking the average water bill up to $45 a month. That's what you need to keep the water utility functioning in good financial shape. Taking care of that, that new bond issue that's, we're scheduled to close for the proposed project. The next page is just what that means to your current rates, to your proposed rates. If you were to compare the proposed column to what you'll see in the ordinance, you'll see that that's where those numbers come from. The last thing I wanted to, to present to you is what this impact means to the average homeowner in comparison to comparable communities. You may recall, we had this sort of information the last time we adjusted rates. The first, there's, so there's two, two slides in the report. The, the first slide shows where your rates on a water, just water bill would, would fall in comparison to some surrounding communities. And then the second takes into account that most of your utility customers are going to pay both the water and the sewer bill. And again, it gives you a comparison of how your rates compare currently and, and with the proposed adjustment to some of your peer communities. The, conclude my comments just by saying that this is the last piece of the, of the puzzle for the project we've been talking about for, for a while. The financing is in line to close next month with the SRF program. We do have a, kind of a caveat from them that they want us to close that before the end of the calendar, actually, before the end of the middle of the next, of next month. So that's our timeframe, and we're in a position to go ahead and do that. But one of the steps that's necessary is for us to go through the rate adjustment process. So I conclude by saying it's our recommendation that you make these adjustments to your rates that are reflected in the ordinance. That'll keep us on track to keep the project financed. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer this.
Why is it that you come the last month before we go into doing this? Just like the last time you come in, in November, we had to write through to get the interest rate. And the interest rate that you have different from the interest rate that we had on the bond that we were supposed to get. I would like to know why we always wait for November meeting before we get any of this information. I mean, what's going to be the difference between the bond we have now and the interest rate on the bond we're getting for second phase? What's the difference in the interest rate?
The first phase, we closed at, I think, a 3.55 percent, and this is at 2.42 percent.
And what will constitute that not going up at any given time?
It's a commitment that the SRF makes as a fixed interest rate. Once the documents are executed, the loans close, it's six for the full term of the loan.
And how long is that going to hold? One year?
Yes.
You want to talk about the timing?
I do. That's a, that's a good question. The way the project, the way the timing was, was driven by is when we knew what the project was going to cost. The way this project was priced was through a negotiation known as a guaranteed savings contract. And what that involved is your engineer designing the scope of work to be done almost in a collaborative way with the, the company that's going to complete the construction, which is Bowen. In that process, Bowen commits that they will not exceed the fixed contract amount. Bowen has been around for a long time, done a lot of projects. That's, that is an advantage of working with that, that company. But at the same time, they recognize that whenever you're doing a construction project, there are potentials for unknown events occurring that will potentially have a impact on the, on the project. Now, the contracts are, are structured that if those changes are to your benefit, you get those savings. To the extent that the contracts are not to your benefit, in other words, it's costing Bowen more than what they estimate, they're, they're at risk for that. So what happens is the less risk there is, the better price you, you have. The way you reduce risk is you design more of the project, given specifics in terms of what the project is going to be. That process of designing the, the project to the point where you can reduce Bowen's risk is to your advantage, because they're, they can measure, if they can reduce the risk, they're going to reduce the price. So that price was negotiated, I think, two weeks ago. Which is, that was the timeframe needed for your engineers to take this project, not the full design, because that would cost more money to, in design fees. But to design it to the level that they felt comfortable that they were giving Bowen a clear picture of the project that they're, that they're bidding on or negotiating a price on. So that's the timing. Wasn't designed with any other objective in mind, other than SRF told us we need to have a project price set by mid-October. And we needed to close the financing by mid-December. So your engineers took as much of that time as they had available to them to reduce as much of the risk as you possibly could to give you the best price possible. That was the driver for that.
I think there's one more consideration is that savings from Phase 1 when we roll over into Phase 2 to help reduce the amount that we had to bond in Phase 2. So any, any risk that we could eliminate in Phase 1, or any work that we could get done where we know we're not. done where we know we're not going to have to take out a contingency or, um, that labor is going to be a lot lower than we expected, that's money that rolls into phase two, that's the less money that we have to bond now.
That's correct. And that alone, I think, generated $400,000 in savings.
How far along on part one?
We still got to get the tank up, aeration.
The tank boost station, aeration. They get all piped in to the ground. Well, settings up, ready to roll. Tank takes time, aerators take time, big leak time on aerators.
Where are you at on the policy?
It's like, maybe with contingency, it was about $800,000 that they're under contract price. If you include the four and $2,000 contingency.
That's, if you include that, yes.
I think it's about $800,000 if you include the contingency.
Leanne, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
We have three water bonds, is that correct?
That is correct.
Two 13, two 15, and two 18?
Correct.
Do you know the amounts of those?
No, I'm, I'm not good at it. One originally was a 2.4 million. That's, that's your original one, and if you refinance in 15, you get your 13, I think is one point, was 1.9 million. What's that down to, one point?
Can you see if I can find those numbers?
You're down on both of them. Your third one is actually your SRF one.
Right.
But your other two are down.
So we're ahead of the game with the first raise, and we've got one for channel S and the other one for eight quarters. So that's toward that.
Yeah, it was originally 2.4, because that's the one we refinanced in 15.
In 15.
Now the 13 one. And that started out at 1.9.
Is that, did you say that, that two is down?
Yeah, that's the 13.
Yeah, that was the 13. So you're at 1.6.
1.6 on the 13, and the 15 is actually...
That's the balance?
Yeah.
1.6 now.
15 is 2.1.
1.6 on the 2,013 loan, and then what's the 15?
About 2.1.
2.1 million on the 2,015 one?
Correct.
And then the, it's the 2,018, is that this figure here?
That's your 7.0. And that's if we use it all, correct?
Right, you can roll.
Yeah, you can use it all, because it'll roll.
Because you're going to roll it over to phase two. So you're going to carry the debt on phase one. You're going to carry the 7.4.
7.4, because anything that's left over.
But you're actually rolling part of phase one over into two.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Julian, I know last year, when you were here, you anticipated, what, a 135 percent increase on the water rates?
Those were based on preliminary numbers.
Preliminary numbers. And right now, we're 99 percent from 2018 to today. I mean, I know you got 32.8 from last year, and you're from 19 to 20, so we're somewhere around 99 percent. What's the driving factors on those? I mean, the $2 million in grant funds?
The $2 million in grant funds, the, they, uh, the fact that you negotiated, conserve the price of the first phase project is coming in at least $400,000, $800,000, let's say. So I would say it's just rolling over to phase two. Phase two did not come in substantially different from what the engineers, um, updated estimates. More on that for those save, uh, phase ones coming in dramatically lower. So I think, simplest terms, your project funding is a better, is better, going to be $2 million of grant funding than your project costs.
So, so with this new bond, this new loan with the others, we're totaling 18.35 million, give or take, um, of loan for the city.
Right.
But I didn't, I didn't follow the math, but I'm sure it's just adding numbers. If your, if your addition's correct, then your number's correct.
I think the easiest thing if you're, if you want to look at numbers, we're making the payment at 27 and 9, correct? And a debt third payment of $6,100. So if you want to look at numbers, because for me, for me to look at numbers, then I look at the payments that's coming out of our water department. So I look at the payments on the three bonds. So this first, first stage, I write a check every month and put it over there so that when the payment is due twice a year, that money's there. And it's a little over $27,000. But I am also contributing an additional $6,100 to go into the debt reserve to protect that.
Any other questions, Mr. Julian?
I'd just like to say in 2008, we went over this, and we chose not to do anything. And, uh, now in 2019, everybody's rates are up, and we're in a terrible place. Whether you think it is or not, I would strongly suggest that we do something to improve the way we're doing it so we don't end up like this again.
Do you see other communities doing incremental increases? I mean, do they set their rate ordinance, you know, on a five-year schedule that says we're going to do 2% each year or something like that?
Yeah, there's a number of ways of how you approach it, but a more common, becoming more common every day is realizing, nobody likes rate increases, but small predictable incremental increases are a whole lot easier for your homeowners and your businesses to deal with. Keeps your, um, utility operating like a business. It's not a business for a profit, but it's a critical business delivering clean, dependable water. So yes, Mayor, that's my sales pitch, is becoming more recognized as best practice to do small predictable incremental increases.
I think the city of Delphi had a rate increase in 2009, and then set back and never had another one until 2013. And I think, um, when we looked back and tried to track it there, I couldn't see for 10, 15 years where there had been a rate increase. But the same people that now are complaining about a rate increase, if, if they owned property and they rented it in Delphi, they wouldn't be renting it for what they rented it 15 years ago. There ain't anybody that do that. There isn't anybody that operates their business that way. And the problem is, we sat here in Delphi and went, who's so many years and never ever did a rate increase, never, just said, we'll, we'll just keep getting by, we'll just keep getting by, and we'll keep putting Band-Aids on it. So you can't do that. You can't do that. And in any other business, you don't do that. So, um, you're correct, we don't intend to operate that water department or the wastewater department and make a profit. But we expect it to pay for itself. And you can't expect it to pay for itself if you're going to sit there for 20 years and not have a rate increase. You can't.
And questions for Mr. Julian? Do we want to take public comment at this time? And we will have a public hearing on second, third reading. Been through enough, I think you know what we're doing. I'm going to approve the ordinance 20, Act 8, Dan, and Water Rights, first reading. Wait, motion, do we have a second?
Again.
Motion in a second, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those?
No, aye.
Motion carries three, two. And we'll talk about, towards the end of this meeting, when we want to schedule a special meeting in the neighborhood. Thank you, Steve.
A pleasure. We'll see you at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. So we'll move next. I may have forgot that, I did, I'm sorry, forgot to print this resolution on, put it agenda. Proposed Resolution 2019-10. I'll go ahead and read it, it's pretty short. Whereas Indiana government's legislative bodies didn't initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance, whereas Article 4, Section 17 of Delphi zoning ordinance provides guidance regarding all street parking spaces and driveways, now therefore be a resolved. County Council of the City of Delphi, that the area plan commission is hereby requested to recommend an amendment to the Delphi zoning ordinance regarding the driveways. This was brought up at the last meeting, it's something that China addressed, uh, the area plan commission, or at least started talking about probably in the beginning of summer, late spring. I provided a copy of the zoning ordinance, um, with your packet. Is there any discussion about this? It would, you know, the APC, they would make a recommendation, I would come back to us, and then the city council could choose to approve that recommendation or amend it and adopt it, the changes of any of this. Any discussion amongst council? Is there a motion for passage of proposed Resolution 2019-10? So move. Is there a second? Can you see this? This not very clear. Here's the actual.
So in plain English, this is really saying?
Saying APC, please give us a recommendation on how to change our zoning ordinance regarding driveways. All this is initiated, goes to the end, they discuss and they talk about driveway ordinances. And this was the conversation about curb cuts, widening driveways on private property. There's some other, other names mentioned in Section 17 here that APC could say, you can leave that the same, or we recommend changing this. Really, we just put it in their hands and make a recommendation back to us. Second. Yeah, we have a motion. All right, we have a motion in a second regarding proposed Resolution 2019-10. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those?
No.
Motion carries four, one. So we'll send that over, I did not print off a copy of that. We'll send that over to the committee, to the area plan commission. Next on business, I have a setting a special meeting for second reading of proposed ordinance 2019-10. I know we have one regular meeting left in the term, however, we should have a special meeting. I think I asked the council to look at November 25th. Are there any objections to having it on November 25th at 5:30?
Here.
Here. Yes, you're turned. So can we go ahead and, I think our ordinance requires a motion. Next, given it's a 20, any threat? Correct.
I make the motion in a special meeting, I want a rate on November 25th at 5:30.
Second. Motion in a second, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, motion carries. Does that suffice for public comment? Is that anyone something to add?
I probably ought to have something I'm writing, please. Short and sweet. Yeah, that's fine.
All right, let's move next to miscellaneous business. Council comments and requests? Council here? President, President Stewart? Council chair? Councilwoman Pearson?
Council chair.
Projector Orkich? Public comment? Yes, sir.
The general that's here will be here for a special meeting also?
Uh, somebody from Baker-Tillie will be, I think he's a, he's playing on meeting here.
I think they get, they blow out the financial work, they're not looking for that.
Any other public comment? What last motion we made?
Motion here.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Thank you all. It is 6:45 AM.